I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, August 18th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, will you take role, please?
Mayor Lakind.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Here.
Councilmember Kronik.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Present from Oklahoma City.
Thank you. And Councilmember Smith.
Here.
All right, everybody's here. Ashley, any disclosures of conflicts of interest?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we'll move on to the agenda and approval of the consent agenda. Is there any modifications to the agenda? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Did I click? Oops, I clicked it too soon. Sorry, guys.
Oh, I can't even see it. All right, that, were you missing people?
Me.
Yeah, hold on. Let me redo that.
I can't, I can't think of it.
There we go. There we go. Just redo it. Take two.
Wait, were we voting?
Yes.
Well, I changed my mind now.
Well, that's your choice.
Count seven. Seven zero, that passes. All right, we'll move on to a liquor license application for the Bines and Brews Festival.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Tonight I bring you a festival permit for Pike's Peak Brewing Company that applied for a festival permit to be held on a one-day festival on September 20th at Limbaugh Park, 151 Front Street. The application was filed on July 17th, 2025. The applicant is a qualifying license type to obtain such a permit, and the applicant has permission to use a proposed location for the festival within the areas of the diagram provided. So we're just looking for approval of the festival permit.
Okay, we've seen this before. Anybody who goes to Bines and Brews knows that it won't be the same if there's no alcohol there.
Is that vote influencing? Is that? I make a motion to, oh, wait, do we have to make a motion? Or, yeah, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the festival permit application for Pike's Peak Brewing Company for Bines and Brews Festival event to be held at Limbaugh Park, 151 Front Street.
Motion in a second. That motion passes seven to zero. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing item, ordinance 152025, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development for Native Sun Construction at 15010 Wood Carver. This is to be continued. I think we already opened the public hearing at the last meeting, so I'll just look for a motion to continue.
I still move.
Need a date first? Is it, is it the first meeting in September?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
I believe it's September 15th.
Second meeting, okay, so motion to continue for the
I so moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to continue this hearing item to September 15th. Moved and seconded. And that motion passes seven to zero. All right, on to Resolution 532025, a resolution to approve professional service agreement for the town engineer and related engineering services between IMEG Consult Corp. and the Town of Monument. Mr. Underlider, how is Maine?
Portland, Maine is beautiful, but not as beautiful as Monument, Colorado. How's that for an answer?
Good save there, buddy.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you eating lobster? Because?
I did have lobster and eh, it's not worth the $35 for that it costs. It's kind of, it's, it's okay.
Okay.
Um, so good evening, guys. The, our parent council, you can tell they're a little more relaxed these days. So, um, we've been using an on-call engineer since 2017. And as we, we discussed earlier this year, we, staff was recommending that we bring on a full-time appointed town engineer to take on that role. We, at the last meeting, we adopted code changes for Title II that actually created the position of town engineer and also provided for the duties of that town engineer. On April 9th, the planning department issued a request for proposals to to seek an independent contractor to service that town engineer. A copy of that proposal is in attachment A. The RFP outlined the town's intent to engage this qualified individual engineer or an engineering firm to fulfill this role and provide a comprehensive range of services in support of capital projects and private development activities that would be overseen by both the planning and the public works departments. The, in May, on May 5th, we received five outstanding proposals from reputable engineering firms. The proposal evaluation team, which included members of the planning department and the public works department, reviewed each of these proposals in consideration of their expertise, breadth of, breadth of experience, cost, and their ability to serve as the town engineer. The town also paid close attention to ensure that the selected firm would be able to address or best avoid potential conflicts of interest when working with the public and the private sectors. The proposed, or the proposal review team interviewed two firms, checked references, and unanimously concluded that IMAG Consulting Corp. was the best equipped, was best equipped to serve as the town of Monument's town engineer. IMAG's credentials are outstanding. They're with their municipal experience and their ability to serve a variety of engineering services. In addition, the town, we found that, that found their collaborative-friendly approach welcoming and compatible with the town's employee and elected official, officials' work culture and ethic, which was very important and formulating a long-term relationship. The members of the IMAG team are in the audience, but I'm only going to introduce to you, to them if you accept this contract. So the professional, so the professional services agreement is included as a tat, exhibit A of the proposed resolution and which is attachment B to this memo. It incorporates IMAG's, IMAG's responsible, or response to the April 9th RFP which outlines their IMAG consultant team, scope of services, relevant experience, regulatory expertise, and proposed service rates. The agreement was prepared, was prepared by the town attorney to align with the town's standard service contract format to reflect the scope and expectations established for the town engineer under our new chapter 2.26, Title II of the Town Municipal Code. Now, I do want to call out something because I know that the council has has been very strict on having a not-to-exceed clause. So I worked with our town attorney and we've developed something that I think that will, will suit the needs of council. Rather than having the contract set to a fixed maximum expenditure of services and such as a construction contract to sure, to assure that we, budgetary clarity and control. What we've done here is we've actually included this statement. Compensation, which is, this is on page two of the agreement, established that the total compensation shall not exceed $1 million each budget year or the approved budget for the service provided, whichever is less. Now, every, you might, the $1 million might be a shock, but that, that dollar amount could easily, if budgeted, could easily be closely spent through management of large project, projects such as Jackson Creek Parkway improvements, stormwater manage, significant stormwater management improvements, the construction of new water tanks or water facilities in town. So we could very easily get up to that amount. However, we are gonna, we, we want to make sure the council through this contract has absolute control on how much we're spending when it comes to our town engineer services. And that's why we've tied it directly to the annual budget. So it's either up to a maximum of a million dollars or the budgeted amount for that year, whichever is less. The reason we're proposing this is that to provide you the flexibility of utilizing the town engineer for projects that makes sense and taking advantage of their expertise and their breadth of knowledge, being, this being a national company, they have quite a few people other than local that they could bring into, to support the town and its efforts. But it also prevents us from having to renegotiate the contract, which is very important. We don't, if, right now, we have a contract to services with a, with a set amount. And this contract will hold them that, to that, to that amount till the, the contract expires and we have to negotiate a new contract. So rather than a new project requiring us to come back to the table to negotiate, we really get to control the expenditures through budget, and budget can only be changed by council. So that's, that's, so it's a different approach, but I think it gives you the control that you're looking for in a contract. The and I think it's also more, it's more transparent at the end of the day that you'll, that the public will see how much we're spending on on engineering services with our, rather than doing it, right currently, right now, we just are spending it on a $25,000 work order basis. This will have a total amount established at the beginning of the year. We will break it out to what was considered reimbursables, which are, are are reimbursables when we use an engineer for a development project where the developer is required to pay us back for those, for that amount for engineering services. Whether there's non-reimbursable, which are for actual projects that we have to budget for, such as any kind of capital improvement project or facility improvement. So I think this is a much more transparent way of of reporting and, and managing services such as this. So tonight, what I'm, I'm asking for a motion to approve the resolution that's attached to, to approve a professional services agreement for the town engineer and related engineering services between IMAG Consultant Corp. and the Town of Monument, subject ultimately to attorney review before it is signed by both parties. Any questions?
Well, let's find out. Everybody have a chance to review the contract that came in our email? Okay, I know we republished it, so it's out there for the public. And I guess we have Taylor and Shelley here, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Any questions for staff?
I have a comment, if I may. I'm impressed by the way you handle this. The planning department handled this raise in the back. I'm also really impressed with IMEG.
IMAG.
Excuse me.
I just figured it out. It's good.
Okay.
I felt.
IMAG. I stand corrected.
Right. Any other comments? Councilmember Kimpel, do you have anything you want to add? Questions?
Oh, yeah, just a few things. Number one, I appreciate the time and effort that the staff has done to put this together, so thank you. Number two is has IMAG done any work with the Town of Monument in the past? Number one. One, or number two, any other local municipalities or communities?
So Council Kev, that's great questions, and that was part of our reference process. The, and, and Taylor and Shelley can speak up to that as well. The, we, I don't believe we haven't done any work with IMAG in our, in our past, but they do have quite a bit of experience here in, in Colorado. I believe, well, I'm gonna, rather than guessing from a distance, I'm gonna let Taylor kind of speak up on some of his some, some of his clients and our fellow municipalities that he's worked, that worked with.
Yes, we have done work in other municipalities and other service districts, specifically in El Paso County, Fountain Creek Watershed District. I think you guys are probably familiar with that district. We're, we're serving as, as consultant to Fountain Creek, doing some grant applications for them and some other tasks associated with ongoing business within the district. Most recently, we awarded the contract to assist El Paso County with their design standard updates, which is a huge endeavor for El Paso County. And obviously will impact the Town of Monument as well in some capacity. So.
Their, their design standards are impacting Monument?
Yeah, it's, it's sort of a trickle effect. Often, the county sets standards and the municipalities carry those or weigh those into their own standards is what we found.
Okay.
Thanks. I'd say I have one comment for Dan. So just because that, you know, we're, people are gonna look at this at this million-dollar annual budget. There, there is. What's that? It's, no, I understand. I understand. But not to, you know, not to exceed, so to speak. But anyway, what, how much do you think as far as expenses go that in a percentage basis that will be, will get reimbursed for, for projects that are coming to town?
Mayor Pro Tem King, this is something that I'm, I'm working with. I'm actually reviewing our current expenditures. But I, I, I want to point out through the work and effort of the finance department and in coordination with us, we, we've been reaching out and and getting our reimbursements for a, a large portion of those expenses for this year for private development. And it is our intent to get all those dollars reimbursed and any expense per code, any, any engineering or legal expenses that are that are are, are caused, are caused through private development. We have the ability to invoice that private development or applicant for that total amount. In addition, I would suspect that you'll find from the, the upcoming fee study that you'll see that we'll be adding an admin fee, which is very typical of municipalities when they're processing reimbursements for consulting, consulting fees or consulting amounts. So our goal is 100%, but there's, we're always gonna be struggling with a few, but we, we want to receive all of those. So I, I'm right now in process of reviewing what we are, what we're what we're charging or what we're spending on consulting fees for develop, the development community. So that way I can budget appropriately next year as, that is an expense. And then also as a reimbursable or dollars coming in. So that way it'll be transparent in the budget. You'll see what's going out and what we expect to bring back in on an annual basis. And then we're also going to be working with the public works department as they become more comfortable working with our town engineer services rather than specialty services that will also budget for that for those services that, that IMAG provides to the public works, and that would be non-reimbursable for the most part, since it has to do with our own capital improvements.
Sure. And then so if we budget, if we set a budget and the budgets, you know, just making up numbers, but the budget's say 500,000. And then we have a lot of projects that come in in that particular year that will be basically reimbursed to the town. Do you still have to come back and, and increase the budget?
Yes. So if we find that, so say we spent, we know we're gonna be paying our town engineer 500,000, no more than $500,000 for development review. And we happen to come up, we, we start funding ourselves in October at 550 or 560. Before we get there, we'll come back to you and let you know what's happening, and we'll have to provide you an update on the reimbursables that we have been able to successfully invoice and receive payment for. So that'll, again, that'll bring a level of transparency so you know exactly what the development community is requiring of us and then, and how much money we're able to collect from the development community responsibly to pay for those services.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Still have, okay. Any other questions or comments from the council for staff or for members of the IMAG team?
Just one comment. I, one thing that really stood out to me in the proposal was the experience and expertise, especially working with Fountain Creek Watershed District. So bank erosion and stuff like that, which are going to be big issues for us in the coming years, especially when we get done with the comp plan. So I think you guys are absolutely the perfect choice. And I appreciate all the hard work from planning as well and finance.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no other questions or comments, I think staff would like us to approve this. Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 53, Tac 2025, a resolution to approve a professional services agreement for a town engineer and related engineering services between IMAG Consultant Corp. and the Town of Monument.
Motion in a second. And that motion passes seven to zero. Well, thank you very much for coming down here. Good to meet you. Looking forward to you engineering our town.
Thank you.
Next up, Resolution 542025, resolution to amend an IGA with the, with CDOT for the design and expansion of Jackson Creek Parkway.
Good evening, council. This is an amendment to the IGA that was put in place in 2020. This has to do with state and federal funding that are coming to the town for the design and expansion of Jackson Creek Parkway. In May-ish, the CDOT requested an amendment, a reduction of funds based on their needs, and this was specifically to the multimodal transportation and mitigation option funds. So the MMOF funds. So they needed to make a reduction to our funding by $684,595. We were not the only municipality that, that were, were asked for a reduction. Colorado Springs also had a reduction as well, as well as Manitou, I believe. So this is just an amendment to the IGA, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We say no.
I was just gonna ask that.
Well.
I mean, it's not our fault that the state doesn't know how to budget.
This was done through PPA GC, so the people that sit on the, the tip committee, I believe what it's called, kind of made these decisions in advance already. It's, this is sort of like the, the formality of it with the, the contract. So regardless, I believe they are planning to take this money away. Whether or not it's approved.
Well, it just seems weird because, you know, we've got from CDOT some district managers that we have a warrant now for Beacon Light and 105, and we I mean, I know that's not the same thing as Jackson Creek, but to have them, having them take money from this area is gonna hurt.
So our understanding is, is that in future years, this would be given back to this project. I don't know the reality of that, given the state situation, but that's what they have said.
We should be nice, is what you're saying.
Well, I don't, whether we pass it or not, it's gonna get taken, so.
I know. I'm kidding.
Actually, they haven't even given it to us yet, have they?
Correct. Well, because this is part of a bigger contract, and so we just submit for reimbursements as the work is done. So we're still at the, in the design phase of it. So this would have been for like the bike lanes and things like that. So we haven't even gotten to construction yet.
Okay. Questions, comments from the council on this resolution? Okay. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 54-2025, resolution amending an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the design expansion of Jackson Creek Parkway project.
Second.
Yeah, a motion in a second.
And up next is how we're going to get that extra money back.
Yeah, that motion passes seven to zero. We'll be, we have a meeting with CDOT tomorrow, don't we?
I think, maybe, do we?
I think we do. To make sure I let them know that they should thank us for passing that resolution. 552025, resolution authorizing the town to recover cost-related receiving payments. Ms. Phillips? Oh, or Mr. Murray?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'll be taking this one for Jennifer. So to give some background on what this is and why we're moving forward with the resolution, when the Town of Monument transitioned to an online bill pay from the state bill pay collection, we decided as a town that we were going to pass, no longer pass on those costs to the consumer. And this was to encourage people to start paying online, so we didn't get 100, 2,000 checks every month for utility payments. And so as the online bill pay has become more accepted, it's been providing benefits to our customers, faster payments, on-time payments. It has become more commonplace in both public and private sectors to pass these costs along to the consumer. So one of the town council's strategic goals is to ensure financial health and stability. And to accomplish this, the staff has been looking into ways to reduce expenditures, find new revenue sources, things like that. And in finance, the finance policy for revenues and collection in Section 4.01, the town's goal is to diversify the revenue base, which includes sales tax, state shared revenues, impact fees, and other revenue sources. In 4.02, this is establishing new charges and fees as appropriate and permitted by law. So as I mentioned, we have continued to look into new revenue sources. And the one, this following is a pass-along of fees that is, is legal and accepted. And so we are looking for the town council to approve approve resolution 55, 2025. Um, whereas the town is incurring all fees charged for receiving online payments and not passing fees through to the customers. Um, and we are asking for online payments, fees to be passed, um, to consumers, um, and this will start effective September 1st, 2025.
Um, answer questions. This, I'm assume, well, I won't, I shouldn't assume. Uh, you have enough time to give notice to our customers? Was it starting September 1st?
Yep. So it's a retro pay. Um, so it will be starting September 1st, but they'll get this notice on their August bill. Um, so it'll, they'll be noticed on their August bill that they will start paying the online fees for that next bill in September.
This is basically just to recover your costs.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Yeah. As mentioned, we have roughly about 2,000 water billing customers. If all of them pay online, it's roughly about $1,500 a month that the town is just giving back. So that's just recovering that payment cost.
Any, any comments?
Is there, I don't know if you can speak to it or not. Is there any estimate on what kind of revenue this is going to generate?
Um, I can't say exactly. Uh, my best guess would be about 2,000, $3,000 a month.
Perfect. So that's substantial. Yeah. But this is basically covering the cost to process the payments, whether it's human or electronic, whatever's passed through to us, we're just.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. This is no additional fees.
Not making profits off this.
No, this is just the software service.
There's still, just so the public knows, there's no fee for dropping a check off in the box.
Correct.
Unless you're standing there.
We do have a fee for sales tax though. So for sales tax, there is a filing fee.
All right. Well, um, no questions or comments for staff on this?
Okay.
I make a motion to approve resolution number five, five dash 2025, resolution authorizing the town to recover costs related to receiving payments.
Say. The motion a second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero. And that brings us to public comment. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate the desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody in town hall that would like to make a public comment? Terry.
Good evening, council. Terry Hayes with the Tri Lakes Chamber of Commerce. I'd just like to invite everybody out to our business after hours tomorrow evening. It is going to be, um, hosted by Classic Homes. So it's going to be over in one of their properties that it's a really interesting product where there's one driveway, but there's four homes off of it. And we're taking over that whole little quad. We're calling it the end of the summer bash. So we're going to have outdoor music. We're going to have good food, of course, some good drinks, and then Justin John's ice cream's also going to be there. So it's a good way to just say goodbye to the summer and support one of your monument businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Jason, Jason, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I know. You took away the little sign that was ticking down. So I've got it here. I just want to be able to, uh, first thank the council and thanks the mayor for an opportunity to be able to share, um, some exciting news that we are having a ribbon cutting, uh, not tomorrow, but the next day, Wednesday, uh, so you can celebrate two days in a row. And in that celebration, we'll be at the Monument Presbyterian, uh, Community Church. And at that ribbon cutting, uh, we've got some additional news that we will be sharing with the community, uh, related to another support that's come forward through, uh, a lot of good work that's happened, uh, with Madeline and with Mayor and certainly Laura. A lot of people have been around the table trying to solution. Where do we go from a for forever home for not only Silver Key, but for the community? And what's really exciting is that at that event is where we will announce where some design had come together from the, uh, University of Colorado Denver. Their architect students had put together this design to, uh, for us to consider that would outfit an iconic way for a meeting space for the Tri Lakes community, meaning that we will be able to celebrate, we will be able to learn together, we'll be able to party together and have a place where this has been missing for so long in this community. We are going to be able to try to step into this. And through that, uh, you mentioned classic homes, uh, classic homes has donated some land for us to be able to, uh, explore this capital campaign to build out this iconic opportunity for the Tri Lakes region. And in doing so, tomorrow is when I will be, uh, illustrating what the design feature looks like, also being able to thank the church. And with that, we're hopeful that we can create a forever home. Uh, so for many generations beyond, people can look back and say, I grew up there. I remember that space and place that Silver Key Community Center. I had my reception for my wedding there. I learned about the greatness that Tri Lakes brings and specifically this land is at Monument Junction at Jackson Creek. So it's really in the heart and soul of this, of this community. So thank you. And I just appreciate Will for your volunteerism. Thank you for volunteering at Silver Key. And we have a local representative that's helping me move along with this exploring Jarvis. She lives here in Monument and she's helping to be able to move this effort forward as well. And I'm pleased to answer any questions, but more to the point, please be there. Um, it's a good opportunity for this community. It's a good opportunity for the elders that we support. And, and I think that the, uh, the kids that we see as well. Was that my three minute? Oh, Madeline, you stuck that in. I got it, Mitch. I got it.
Is it not showing the clock? What happened to the, where's the clock? I see it on my screen. Is it not up there?
We won't bust your chops if you need to go.
You're still 10 seconds.
You're still good.
I just, 11 seconds. I will just say the, uh, Nicole, who is our ambassador, she brought forward some cookies and Madeline will be distributing them later on. So thanks, Nicole. No, truly. Thanks. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
And we hope to see you there.
Will, is there anybody online that would like to speak? Sorry. We'll get to you. Will? Okay. Last but not least.
Well, it might not be last. It might be somebody else. She could say things that will spark conversation.
I know. Um, thank you, Mayor and council members. Haley Chapin for Tri Lakes Cares. Uh, two things I wanted to mention. One is I wanted to give kudos to the team that was working on the water pipe break that was in the middle of Jackson Creek and Second Street. Um, that had a lot of impact on the community members and they were very quick and kept us very informed. Obviously we were, uh, waiting to hear whether or not water was being shut off and whether or not we had to close our operations. So, um, the team did a fabulous job of making sure that any downtime was minimal and not impactful to operations of our business. So kudos to that team. And then also, um, wanted to make a request. If the trees are actually working, um, September is hunger awareness month and we do campaigns in the community to raise awareness about hunger in our community. And so we do that by, um, wearing the color orange. You'll see for the month of September, I will have pins, uh, that will have an orange flag and that will just be our way, one of the easy ways to show our support of the hunger awareness campaign. In the past, the town has been able to change the color of the lights to orange for the month of September. And then we go and we take pictures with the lights behind us and, and publicize that your support along the campaign of raising awareness. So if that's possible and they aren't chewed up by the groundhogs, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley.
I heard the hyenas were getting to them too.
Yeah. Thanks for making a flag. Some of us don't look good in orange.
Okay. Uh, next up, future agenda item authors. Oh, well, no more public comments, right? Anybody else? No. Okay. They'll close public comments off and we'll move on to future agenda item authorization. We've got four items on there.
You all have six.
We have six items. Okay.
And so we were, um, asked by the Small Business Development Center if they could come and do a presentation on, um, some of the services that they provide to our community. And at the same time, they would like to do a proclamation for National Veterans Small Business Week as well as Small Business Saturday. Um, and they were hoping to the, to do that on October 6th. And then, um, Creek Week is coming up. And so Fountain Creek watershed district would like to do a proclamation for that on September 15th.
What's that, uh, agenda shaping up to look like?
Pretty busy.
Gonna limit the presentation?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be just a quick proclamation.
Just a proclamation, not a full blown.
Present, yeah. As far as I understand, it was just a proclamation for Creek Week.
Okay. Any other two?
Um, and then we are getting ready to advertise for Economic Development Committee that we've talked about. Um, and so I'm looking for two council members who would like to volunteer to be on that committee. So we talked about it, um, during the, oh, I don't remember a couple of weeks ago, we talked about it during the economic development strategy that we were going to create a committee.
When are the meetings thought to?
Have not yet been determined. Um, you know, that'll, it'll probably likely be that we'll pick a first meeting and then try to get based on the availability of the members, when, how often, all of those kinds of things.
Who will the members be?
Um, we'll be looking for business members, um, and residents from the community.
I, I'll put my name in the, in the thing.
Okay.
I would too.
I'll throw my name in.
Oh, you're three.
Bro, that's three.
You're too busy. Cage match.
Yeah.
If you want to Ken, you can do it. That's.
But.
Ken chimed in too.
Yeah, no, I. I would, it would be nice to have one from each side. So I'll, I'll back out and then that way we can have.
That's a good point.
I'm at large.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm a small business owner too.
Okay.
Okay.
You sure? Yeah.
Right. I'll.
So I saw it goes out.
And yeah, Ken and Chad.
Ken and Chad.
All right. As we, um, advertise for this and we get together, the first meeting, we'll try to, um, figure out what works best for everybody's schedule. Thank you. Six AM on a Wednesday. Um, and then finally I'd sent an email and I'm just needing to get RSVPs for the shield 616 event on September 13th. Um, so if you could let me know your availability, at this point, I don't believe that we, we only have a table for eight. And so depending on who our RSVPs, we might be able to allow you to bring a guest, but at this point, I just want to see who's interested.
I've believe I've already RSVP'd.
Yes, Mayor, you have RSVP.
And if I'm not here.
And if you are not here.
Yeah, depending on my travel. Um, but I, I will let people know as soon as possible if, if I can't be there.
What was the date?
It's Saturday, September 13th. I believe it's in the evening. I don't recall the exact time, but I did send an email about it. So seven, I think doors open at 5:30 and then the actual event starts at seven.
I'm.
We need to respond to you.
Yes, please.
I'll be traveling back on that day for potential. I need to from up. Maybe.
That was all the items that I had for each night.
Okay. And then of course, uh, we'll move on to your town report.
Um, so the fourth of July is one of the big, the biggest event that our community holds. And that's, um, really involves almost every single person that works in this organization. So I'd, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank staff. Um, in addition, this year, um, led by Detective Kio, um, they really put together a great safety plan. And so between the police department and public works, they really helped implement that. And I'm happy to report that there were no incidents during the fourth of July. And we're hearing that we might've had one of our largest crowds too. We're, we're still trying to firm up what those numbers were, but the fire department, based on some of their drone footage, believes there was about 24,000 people attending that event. So rather large. Yes. So, um, again, I just really appreciate the support of staff. We also had, um, for the first time ever, a town float. Um, and I know several of you were there that participated as well. And then we had our comprehensive plan, um, in the street fair as a booth too. So appreciate all of the, the town staff really pitching in on that event. Um, summer is not over yet. Concerts in the park are still going strong. We will continue those. We are going to, um, go through September 3rd because we had a rain out in July on one of the dates. So we were able to reschedule that. Um, in our planning department, we welcomed Maryam Meridian as our senior planner to fully staff our planning department. Um, so it's really important to keep those projects coming into Monument as, yes, it's very exciting. I know planning is thrilled and, and I know Emily and Dan and the, um, everyone did a great job with bringing Maryam in and she's, she's great. We love having her here and she's going to be a great addition to our team. Um, we celebrated the expansion of Root Outfitters in downtown Monument in July and welcomed Ziggy's Coffee to Jackson Creek. So some new businesses in town. Our parks department received a $100,000 grant from the El Paso County Commissioners from the Community Development Block Grant. So Cassie applied for this grant to go towards the Heart of Monument Park, um, parking lot. So that's, um, really exciting to, towards that project to get that going. We're hoping to actually break ground in 2026. I hear that fundraising is going well. Um, as you heard, water has responded to some emergencies and they've done a great job with, um, those calls for service and making repairs. And the departments have been working in July on submitting their budgets, which will be presented to you in, um, early September. Um, and we've been reviewing them by the leadership team as well as, um, our citizen service level advisory committee that meets again this week. Our records management team has been working on uploading documents into our new records management system, Laserfish, and we've been cleaning out rented storage facilities to save costs. So really trying to get our records management system up and running. Our communications department has launched a shop local campaign on social media, um, to help encourage the community to shop locally in Monument and keep our sales tax dollars here so that we can continue to provide services to our community. And then finally, um, our departments have been working on their strategic objectives and response to your strategic priorities in order to keep our strategic plan moving. So we should have that finalized by the end of, um, next month and then present that to you in October and then we'll be working towards finalizing that plan. And that's just the highlights of the report, but I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify anything, um, that council might have questions about.
Questions or comments?
Yep.
Very great. Staff does a great job with those.
Yeah, you guys are knocking it out of the park with the reports. They're just informative and they're starting to get fun. And even, even the not so great news is still not totally depressing. So good job.
Pictures are good too.
Yeah, the pictures are nice. Laura Hogan does a great job compiling all of that information together. So.
All right. Next up, uh, council comments. Um, I've got a couple, but anybody want to? Anybody got something they want to add?
Yes, just real quick. Uh, thanks to all of those that showed up at, uh, the prom, promontory point, H A day in the park. Um, that was probably our biggest, um, public service show. And it was our smallest neighborhood, neighbor showed, um, show ironically. Uh, but that was the first time where we had, um, uh, seven, significant amount of MPD as well as, uh, town staff, uh, and, um, Monument Fire, uh, show up. So thank you for that. Uh, I'll, um, also echo, thanks for fixing the, the, the leak when Lolly's ice cream closes. When Lolly's Ice Cream closes, uh, it's bad news in my house, so thank you very much. Um, especially since Lolly's was providing the, uh, desserts for our, um, for our party, the HOA party. And they closed two days before, and we're like, and Emery was freaking out, so thank you for that, and that's it.
Well, I would, um, just like to say, I don't know what the status of the lights on our trees are anymore, but I would be good with changing them to orange in September.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say the same, same thing. I was fine with the, uh, lights going to orange. I did have the opportunity to meet with Haley, um, is that last week? Yeah, it's been a whirlwind, um, as part of, uh, uh, getting to know the town and stuff, and a great reception. Thank you for the hospitality. Got to see the operations over there at TriLakes Cares, and it's amazing, and if you haven't done that, reach out to Haley and definitely go check it out. There's a lot going on there. Um, Terry, I still need to come meet with you, too. We'll get that done, I promise, I promise.
Everybody else? All right, I've got, uh, two things. One, I've sent everybody an email related to a tabletop exercise at USAF. Some of you have been able to respond that you cannot attend, uh, totally recognize the fact that, um. They gave us basically three business days notice of this important meeting on wildfire and flooding post wildfire, but. Post flooding of wildfires. Um, and if staff can find someone to go in council's place or alongside, that's great. But, yeah, this is an important meeting to go to.
I would love to go. I've got two meetings at the town that day.
Ditto.
I, I will try to, I'm tomorrow.
You have to RSVP.
I know, I'll, I'll, I'll figure something out, um, i- if I can move. If I can move, uh, the, there's a couple of meetings, so it looks like it's eight to four.
It's an all day event.
It's an all day, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll figure it out.
We're giving you, we're giving you twelve hours notice.
Yes, yeah, that's standard military. It's like, oh, yeah, twelve hours, oh, my goodness. Um, plenty of time, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll try and figure out my my calendar if I can, and then I'll, I'll call you.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, you could actually just.
Yeah.
Scan the QR code and.
Yeah.
Let just email, let everybody know you're going.
Yep, will do.
Right, uh, and there's, there's attachments in there. Um. The other thing, uh, the other day, I think it was, what day was that? Thursday, Wednesday, last week, I, they're all running into each other. Oh, it's Tuesday. There was a Dutch oven cook-off contest between Scout Troop seventeen, uh, which was, uh, seventy or eighty scouts. Versus Fire Station One. Um, there were six, um, meals prepared, two of which were dessert that the scouts cooked. Um, totally unfair that they judged them as part of the other more savory dishes, but the scouts beat the fire department. Something you can rub into your brethren's face, that a bunch of kids. Beat these adults in their Dutch oven cook-off. I will say that the the winning and second place, uh, was separated by a third of a point. And it was each cobbler beat bananas foster. And with their palisade peaches.
Oh.
I don't know where these bananas.
Each cobbler in a Dutch oven beats anything, any except apple.
So anyway, I was, it was pretty cool to to get to judge it. I don't know if they'll invite me back. I was, I ate everything that they gave me. Uh, that's all I have for council comments. Anything else from anybody else? Okay, then, um. I will move that we go into executive session pursuant to twenty four, tax six, act four oh two, four oh two four B, according by statute for a conference. With the town attorney for a purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding pending legal projects.
Second.
Motion ended a couple of seconds. All right.
You didn't read.
You don't get to abstain very often, all right?
That motion passes, uh, six to zero to one. Uh, we will take a brief recess so that we can clear chambers out, and, uh, thank you all for attending.
And we're not coming back to.
Oh, and we're not coming back. We are, we are, um, adjourning from executive session.